2022 Board Meeting to Order. Ms. Beam, could you do the roll?
Sure.
Mr. Wickliff?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
All right, and now I would like to ask Regency Elementary School Scout Group to come up in front of the board here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and moving on to the adoption of the agenda, we just need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented unless anyone has any.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, but give me one second because I'm not signed in. I would like to add an 8.02 item. We could just call it motion. Under Action Other.
Do you have a description of what that is?
Yeah, would you like me to share what that's going to be? Or do you?
Yeah, I think probably that makes sense.
Yep, okay, hold on. All right. I intend to make the following motion. I move to implement building level mitigation practices district-wide and to apply the Olathe Public School optional/mandatory mask gating criteria to all schools across the district effective February 18, 2022, with the expectation that our matrix will be reviewed on a regular basis and adjusted as our data and our County Health Department guidance begins to provide a clearer picture, clearer path forward.
All right, so that's related to our COVID mitigation. Was that was an eight?
Yeah, the COVID data review is 8.01, so this could be added as 8.02 if you all would.
Okay, I guess I thought, could we handle the same? Could we handle the motion in that? Or do we need a separate agenda item for that?
Either way would work.
I'm content, either way is fine.
Because I think since that address, that deals with COVID mitigation.
I would say actually should probably do an 8.02. As I said here, Billy, briefly think about it because I'm going to make a recommendation, an 8.01 that you may want to have some conversation about before you decide on 8.02.
Perfect.
Okay, so a motion to amend the agenda to add 8.02. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, motion by Ms. Felter, sent by Mr. Connell.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right, so we will add that.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, I just had one question I meant to ask Ms. Beam about this before. It looked to me like 9.02 and 9.05 were maybe the same agenda item. And that probably is a moot point, but I just wanted to bring that to our attention in case it is.
So mine shows?
9.02 and which one?
9.05.
They are, that's an error, we'll take out 9.
So 9.05 on the hard copy.
Future action. Oh, is, okay, I'm online.
Says something different.
They're future actions, so we can amend that when it comes up.
Okay, perfect, good catch.
As opposed to?
Doing anything now.
Yeah, okay, excellent, thank you.
All right, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you.
All right, on to recognitions and awards for February.
Mr. Beveridge, I don't know if you want to have Dr. McCallan do his part as we usually do there.
Well, good evening. Thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we will review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. For those community members in attendance who have signed up for public comments, please come to the podium when the Board President calls your name. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. Public speakers may not identify staff or students by name. In addition, audience members are not allowed to speak, yell, or cause any disruption during public comments. The remainder of the meeting is designated for the Board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Patrons who stay in attendance for the remainder of the meeting after public comments do so in an observatory role. Please note that those who disrupt the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McCallan, sorry about that step. Okay, Maggie, you're up.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin this evening by celebrating the Olathe Public Schools Retired Employee Association and celebrating their 20th anniversary. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development to come forward to assist with the recognition and the following members of the REA Board, if you could come to the front. Diane Gossage, Denise Kieferber.
Diane?
Diana Stevens, Stephanie Royer, Judy Rapp, Debbie Ramirez-Coke, Marcia Stoker, and Christina Robson. The OPS REA members include former classified and certified staff who have worked across the Olathe Public Schools District before retiring. Their mission is to enrich life by providing resources to their members and the educational community. The REA is incredibly supportive of our district and active in our community. I have a lot of nice things to say about you, so you're going to have to get comfortable. Each year, the organization provides two $1,000 scholarships to Olathe graduates who are intending to pursue education degrees. Since the 2004-2005 school year, the REA has awarded 29 Olathe graduates with scholarships for a total of $34,500. To support the classified staff in the district, the REA provides a Mary Cochran Classified Staff Scholarship awarding $500 annually to a staff member pursuing certified education courses. In the 2020, I told you I have a lot of nice things to say about you. In the 2020-21 school year alone, members logged more than 12,000 hours giving back to their community. And we are grateful to the REA for their continued service to the students of Olathe Public Schools and the community, even in their retirement. Educators never retire from doing what is best for students. Congratulations on 20 years. Congratulations. And next, I would like to welcome Olathe North teacher Nicole Yurger along with Principal Jason Herman and 21st Century Academy Coordinator Angela Epps. Nicole is the facilitator and teacher in the Animal Health Academy at Olathe North. She received the 2021 Janet Sims Memorial Teacher of the Year Award. Oh, no, okay, we're all good, okay. She received the 2021 Janet Sims Memorial Teacher of the Year Award from the Kansas Foundation for Agriculture in the Classroom. This award recognizes teachers who instill a passion for learning about agriculture within their students and who have successfully integrated agricultural education into their pre-existing curriculum. She will be recognized during the 2022 KFAC Annual Meeting in January. I should say was recognized. And will also represent Kansas as an entry for the 2022 National Excellence in Teaching About Agriculture Award, which is presented by the National Agriculture in the Classroom Association. Congratulations to you and best of luck moving forward.
Is her family? Maggie, is her family here?
Nicole, is your family here today? Next up, we'd like to recognize Olathe East Senior Billy Sharp. If you could come forward along with Band Director Jeff Smickel and Principal Carrie Lane. Billy was selected to participate in a National Association for Music Education All-National Honor Ensemble. He played trombone in the All-National Concert Band, which is an incredible accomplishment, and he was featured in a virtual performance in January. Congratulations to you, Billy. Billy is your family here? We'd love for them to come and get pictures too.
Emmy recognized.
Emmy recognized. We actually have one more special recognition. Tonight, I am honored that we have the Olathe Mayor's, or Children's Christmas Fund Board here to, Christmas Fund, excuse me, I'm sorry. The Olathe, the name changed. The Olathe Mayor's Children's Fund Board here to tell us about their 2021 campaign. The late Mayor Michael Copeland created the board in 2007 to raise money to meet the basic needs of Olathe children, and since then, this board has raised more than $1.7 million, all of which stays right here in Olathe. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our Mayor John Bacon and Board Vice Chair Valerie Bentley.
We have exciting news to share. Thanks for having us. We're excited to announce that we've reached our fundraising goal this year. Next week, we will be distributing more than $150,000 to Olathe charities. We're also thrilled to announce that our Pennies for Shoes campaign raised a record amount of more than $38,000. Each year, yeah. Each year, Olathe students and their families are the biggest donors to the fund. Since 2011, they have raised more than $260,000 for their fellow students. So we wanted to come here tonight to personally thank you for all you do to ensure the fund is successful and to thank all of our educators who work so passionately to teach their students the importance of giving back and to see firsthand how good it feels to help others. This money will make a difference in thousands of kids' lives. And I'd also like to take a moment to thank the Foundation Board for all their hard work to help with the kids. They donate so much of their time and talent to make this all possible. So now I'd like to introduce our Vice Chair Valerie Bentley. Valerie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I want to let you guys know that our board is made up of 20 people who live, work in Olathe and believe passionately in the needs to help kids in our community. But we are just a few of those people that help this fund be a success. We would like to give special thanks to Member Dr. Guerrero, have to kind of lean over there, for her passion this year for pennies for shoes and taking it to a different level within the middle schools. I'd also like to thank former Board Member Jim Hutchison and current Board Member Harland Parker, who helped create the Pennies for Shoes drive as a way to allow our children to participate in the fund as well as teach them the need about giving back to their community. Thank you so much for your years of commitment to our Olathe kids. We also know that our school's success would not be that without the efforts of our principals. Today, we have some traveling trophies up here, and the key word there is traveling. So you principals, if you'd like to keep this trophy next year, you're going to have to keep on your A-game. So we would like to hand those out, and we're going to start with Manchester Park. They raised again the most out of all of the schools this year, and they did actually the last out of the four, out of the five years. So that's really awesome. So Jenny Steele, if you want to come up, thank you so much for your support. And it doesn't matter. The Olathe Middle Schools also made great strides this year. Every single one of them raised more than the year before. This year's top middle school is Chisholm Trail. Principal Rick Sola, thank you for all your support. And many of the high schools also stepped up this year, however. Olathe North Eagles for the win. Jason Herman, thanks for your support. Kind of a fun little side note, one of our beneficiaries, they painted these shoes for the schools to have as their traveling trophy. So also, thank you guys allowing us to be here tonight. We really appreciate everybody's support.
And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay, moving along to information presentations. We have 4.01 School Spotlight.
We would like to welcome Mr. O, and it looks like some kiddos from Regency Place tonight. Welcome, Mr. O and team.
Well, good evening, Board of Education members, district staff. My name is Greg Oborni. I am the proud and veteran principal of Regency Place Elementary, home of the Lions. Thank you so much for allowing me to share and talk about one of the great loves of my life, Regency Place Elementary. Yes, I said loves. I've been blessed to work for Olathe District Schools and be part of their team for 35 years, 22 of those years being principal at Regency Place Elementary. So I think if that isn't true unconditional love, I don't know what is. But tonight, we are here to showcase and learn about Regency Place Elementary. So here it is. It's a fine, handsome building. Looks like many of our other elementary buildings, but certainly some things that make it special. Let's get to know RP. You probably didn't know that we opened back in 1999, also the year of Y2K. Remember that drama? We opened with 413 students, which is uncannily similar to our enrollment as of today, 411 students. Now, in 10 years, we had reached a high of 694 students as a result of growth. Because of that, we were able to add significant additions to the building. The first one coming in 2006, we added four additional classrooms and a flex space. And then, of course, in 2014, when we added the security front office. Bet you didn't know, 72,000 square feet of learning space on 8.9 acres. And of course, our playground has had two significant PTO, community-funded playground upgrades. So we've talked a little bit about the building. I want you to follow this. The four walls. What about the people within our building? There are 20 K through 5 classroom teachers currently at Regency Place. 22 additional certified staff support our learning. This is followed up by 16 support staff that are there backing up this great team. Probably most significant, and I do want to point out, I think one of the main secrets of our success, is the fact that out of the current certified staff members, 75% of them have been here 10 years or longer. And in fact, we even have some of those original Dream Team members here tonight that started the dream back in 1999. Original Dream Team, please stand. And I also want to talk about commitment. Okay, it's a snow day, it's nighttime. If you're an RP staff member, raise your hand. Along with the commitment of our educators, we of course have our parent-teacher organization. 13 committees meet monthly with a variety of tasks that support our school community. We have classroom volunteers regularly assisting and helping students support. We also have, and I'm very proud of this, our ELL program that supports the language learning of lots of kids that come into RP speaking no English at all. This program is able to turn non-English speakers into fluent learners in a matter of years. And it's been great for our entire school community. Of course, one of our major people is Baxter, the therapy dog, who is one of the best companions of our counselor, Mrs. Jennifer Cullen, who is back there. Baxter is here at school almost every day helping kids feel comfortable, safe, providing a little bit of love, and helping kids get back into their zones of regulation. Okay, so we've talked about the building, we've talked about the people. Let's talk a little bit about Regency Place has regarding what's going on inside. It's teaching and learning. Our students have a variety of clubs that they can participate in after school. We have community service. Every grade level, every year, has a community service project that they conduct that is hands-on and which they support the community and give back. Our chillax, a little nod to the 90s, is our sensory room that has a variety of items through a grant from the Olathe Public Schools Foundation plug that allows kids to get regulated, feel good about learning, and get back to being the most successful they can be in the classroom. We have differentiated learning. Our teachers are skilled so that every student, no matter of their ability, is going to be able to maximize their learning in the classroom. Of course, our students take their learning seriously. They take it into their own hands. They goal set on map, against assessment, and most recently, on our New Year's resolutions. The growth mindset is present. Of course, we have our behavior, social, emotional learning that's very evident with ROR, which is very much part of our culture. ROR, R, respect self and others. O, own your behavior. A, always do your personal best. And R, remember safety. And driving all of this are those people back there. It's the teacher PLCs. They're setting goals, they're using our school improvement plan to drive instruction and provide the best learning for our students. Okay, so you're following me. We've got the building. We've got the people. We've got what we're doing inside the building. What does this yield? What does this produce? What is the outcome? I think it's pretty clear. It's a legacy, a legacy of student achievement and teaching excellence, as evidenced by 2006, the national blue ribbon won of five schools at Regency in the state of Kansas, honored in DC. That was followed up in 2009 and 16 with the Kansas Governor's Achievement Award, also based on student achievement. Also, four State Horizon new educators began their careers at Regency Place. Of course, two National Spelling Bee Champions in 2009 and 2015, the Shiver Shanker sisters. BTW, Sid. You know the trophy that they win, okay? So I went up to Vanya and said, "Vanya, can I hold it?" And she says, "Sure." So of course I did what anybody would do. I lifted over my head, pretended I was Roger Federer, I just won Wimbledon. She said, "Put it down, Mr. O." Follow that up with, just currently, US News and World Report ranked RP 11th out of every elementary school in Kansas. Follow that up with seven Olathe Public School Educator Excellence Awards, five educator grants totaling over $20,000 that come from the innovative people you see in the back that are teaching, that are making a difference with our students. And finally, this is not really a quantitative item, but more of a qualitative thing that you really can't measure. But when you have a former RP student that now is a teacher on staff, who had her very first teaching year in the room where she was a fifth-grade student, I think that's a legacy. Okay, so you've heard me do a lot of talking about Regency Place. We all know that the best reviews are testimonials from stakeholders that are within the organization. We have tonight two very talented fifth-grade writers. They were part of a differentiated writing group that were charged with two writing prompts. What did you learn at Regency Place? And what do you love about Regency Place? Let's hear their voices. I'd like to introduce first of all, Braylon Brockstrom.
What I've learned at RP, RP is so amazing. I've learned so much important stuff at Regency Place. I'm going to talk about my personal experiences, and there are so many. Overcoming my fears is one of the greatest things I've learned at RP. One of my greatest fears I had to overcome was talking. In kindergarten, I was shocked and scared to even say anything to anyone. My teachers helped me through that fear by being super nice and always helping me out by encouraging me. In first grade, I had my first musical. My dad egged me to get a speaking part in the musical. I did and had so much fun on the stage. I'm so glad RP gave me the chance to overcome my fear. ROR, it means so many important things at our school. R stands for respect self and others. O stands for own your behavior. A stands for always do your personal best. And R stands for remember safety. My teachers have helped me learn all these things. They are all very important now, and I will need them later in life. I've known them since kindergarten, so I've had them memorized for a long time. I've learned so much at RP. I've learned how to make friends, work outside my comfort zone, and develop learning skills to be successful in life.
Next up, we have Haya Khan.
Regency will always be an important part of my life. I've spent all my elementary school years at RP. I've made many friends, many memories, and have met many kind teachers. I love going to Regency Place because I feel safe. The people there are so kind, and I love all the interesting things there. I love RP because I can always feel safe. At RP, I have never felt scared. At RP, I have never felt scared or unsafe. We always practice our fire drills and tornado drills. We also practice Alice. The teachers always have a plan of what we can do if something bad was to happen, which makes me feel even safer. If there happens to be a time where I do end up feeling scared or unsafe, I can always think of one thing. The people at Regency will always look out for me. Another reason I love RP is that the people are so amazing. All the teachers are so kind and teach the students well. Whenever you're stuck on something, the teachers will always help. The teachers are also very thoughtful towards students. The kind people I've met are such a big part of why I love RP. A school is a special place for kids to reach for the stars and teaches them kindness. Regency Place is such a school. I love going to RP because the people there are so kind, the place is safe, and there are so many things to learn. Like many others, I am so lucky to go to Regency Place.
Thank you again for allowing us to share the Regency Place story. So we would like to conclude with just a 90-second visual of what happens inside these walls. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving along to 4.02, we have our bond presentation.
Dr. McMullen is going to provide us our bond information presentation tonight. Thank you, Jim, for doing that.
Well, good evening. And Dr. Yegar, I just want to thank you publicly for giving me the opportunity to follow Greg Aborni. Appreciate you setting me up for success there. Tonight, I'm excited to present to the board part two of our bond presentation. Last month, Mr. Hutchison was up here and covered quite a bit about the bond, the financing, and the first two threads, and I'm going to take us through some other things here tonight. A quick recap, obviously, we have a proposed $298.3 million bond, a no-tax rate increase, but a March 1st mail-in ballot. Just a reminder that the capital improvement plan is really our ongoing fluid needs assessment. Over 1,500 items from across the district, as small as a doorknob replacement to as large as an addition or the need to reconstruct a school. We utilize that to really guide projects for upcoming bond work. Tonight, I'm going to take you through Threads 3 and 4, which are student experience and safety, and kind of dive into those a little deeper. As I mentioned before, Mr. Hutchison took us through the growth and reinvestment and technology and innovation last month. So Strand 3, the student experience. This is really kind of one of the exciting strands in the bond. High school media center renovations, middle school auditorium renovations, career and tech ed spaces, elementary playground upgrades that will all be ADA compliant, district activity centers parking lot lighting, converting those to LED, athletic facility updates and expansion, specifically baseball and softball, and turf replacement. And I'd like to take the opportunity to just dive into those just a little deeper. So our high school media center renovations, you'll see on the left is a picture of Latha South Library. And while we've done a lot of work in there in terms of carpet and paint and some other things, it's certainly not up to par with the standards of today's learning spaces that you see in our libraries. Latha West is a good example of a modern learning space in the library media center. So really excited for that to take place in four of the five high schools. Middle school auditorium renovations, really needed in nine of the 10 middle schools. Summit Trail, obviously, is just a few years old. It is on the right there with the black curtains, and you can see that's really, I'm trying to capture a snapshot of what these look like with one photo, but just notice the seating, the flooring, the lighting, the size of the stage, et cetera. On the left-hand side is Chisholm Trail, and you can see those, actually, those seats that are down right now are down because they're broken. They just stay down all the time. We've got some major work to do in our other middle schools, and those are spaces that are utilized throughout the day and throughout the evening, both by our students and frankly also by our community. So, excited to address that. Career and tech ed spaces. Really, as we continue to grow our CTE programming, as the board has supported over the years, with that, we need space to hold those programs. And so, as we continue to be innovative and on the forefront of that programming for our juniors and seniors, the space is needed for that will come from this bond. One of the things I'm most excited about, frankly, is elementary playground upgrades, making all of our playgrounds ADA compliant and accessible. You'll see, this is one of the models we put in place at Green Springs Elementary. You'll see it's a composite surface flooring that certainly is wheelchair-mobility accessible. And also, the type of equipment allows students with mobility issues the opportunity to play with their peers. Imagine that same playground just a few years ago, having all that pea gravel around it like you see around the picnic tables there, certainly is prohibitive of some students to be included with their peers. So that's something, and I know our elementary principals are thrilled to get out of the pea gravel business at the elementary school. District Activity Centers parking lot lighting, obviously, we host major events with lots of people at our district activity centers. And we went to take a picture of the lighting at night, and it's so dim, you can't even really tell, so there's no picture there for that. But we do, the early estimates back on that is even the cost associated with replacing the lighting, converting it to LED at the district complexes, which we do keep those parking lot lights on every night, all night. That pays itself off within about four and a half years, so it's a really good investment for us. Student experience, athletic facility updates and expansion, and I mentioned specifically baseball and softball. As you may recall, when we opened Latha West High School, we chose not to build a third athletic district activities complex. So we felt like, okay, we can really massage this and get all five of our schools access to those fields to utilize. What we quickly ran into is kind of what reared up kind of a long-term problem we've had, is our baseball and softball practice facilities. The next page, the next slide here shows you on the left-hand side, the Latha South campus with Indian Trail on the far left, Heritage on the top right, and then Latha South in the middle there. And on the right-hand side, the right-hand photo is Latha North High School. Our two oldest high schools, neither one has a single baseball or softball practice field on campus. So since the beginning of time, those schools have been utilizing city parks and our DAX for practice facilities. With the addition of the fifth high school and then the need for the usage by city teams, et cetera, we're really at the point where we need to add some practice facilities for those programs. One of two things will take place with that, and it's still under study. One option is to just build a new baseball-s softball complex, and the second is, we've begun meetings. In fact, Mr. Johnson was just in a meeting last week with the city about potentially a partnership at one of our city parks, whether it be Prairie Center or Black Bob, and looking at a joint venture of turfing, securing those fields. If we did that, we'd look at cost sharing for getting those turfed, but then we would get priority during our seasons, they would get priority the rest of the year, so we're looking for some innovative solutions there as well. Turf replacement, we're up for turf replacement at four of our five high schools on their main fields. Latha West, obviously, is only halfway through their cycle. And now Strand 4, safety. In our safety strand, we have traffic and parking improvements, access control, additional outdoor cameras, elementary indoor cameras, and district and building radios, and I'll dive into those a little deeper here. Traffic and parking, one of the main projects we're focusing on is parking at Woodland Elementary. We've learned that that lot is certainly on a small size for the size of that building. And in addition to that, just recently zoned to the north of Woodland Elementary's 400 home subdivision going in just to the north, all the way up to College Boulevard. So we see the enrollment at Woodland greatly increasing, as well as the need for additional parking there as well. Access control. You know, the card readers we have on all of our buildings that our staff use to enter. When we, in the last bond, we really created pinch points in all of our schools that allowed folks to be buzzed in, and then they had to then go through the office. What we learned was that really created a little bit of an issue for staff and especially our first responders, that when they respond to a situation, they key into that front door, and then as they go to go through the second set of doors to get into the building, there's no card reader. There's a card reader getting in the office to then go around. And so, we'll be adding those in all of our pinch points, as well as additional card readers on each of our buildings, K-12, to allow more access, again, for staff and more importantly, for public safety as they respond to situations. Additional outdoor cameras, our playgrounds and our DAX. Obviously, our district activity complexes, we have some camera coverage there, but frankly, it's not sufficient for the assets and the investment we've made in those facilities. So we're excited to get those up to speed. Elementary indoor cameras. The elementary schools have typically had a standard of about six cameras, one in the vestibule, in the front entryway, and then exterior cameras by the playgrounds. We're at the point where we're going to add a standard of elementary indoor cameras in our common spaces, basically hallways and cafeteria. And so, in working with our elementary principals, we're very excited about that addition as And then our district and building radios, we will be able to complete the official conversion of transitioning all of our radios in the district from analog to digital, which just provides instant better coverage. It's kind of like watching non-high-def TV and high-def TV in terms of, from a visual standpoint. So really excited to get all of our buildings on the digital system. Then the final piece that I'd like to share with the board is a report we've received from Impact Data Source. It really is just the impact of a bond issue on a community. And they go through and look at the potential projects on a bond referendum, the community, the amount of work that will be needed, the amount of resources, supplies, et cetera. And they put together a summary for us, and really, the impact on our community is essential. 954 jobs created, over $130 million in worker salaries on all the projects. The bond cost, obviously, is $298.3 million. The economic impact comes out to about $384.6. So much of that addition is the $59.5 million in spending. So everything from buying supplies, to architect firms, to construction firms, to supports, to even restaurants, foods, the amount of workers brought in to do all the projects. And then in addition, $2.29 million in additional sales tax revenue as well, so. So one thing I always like to put out as we continue, we've really been on the circuit doing bond presentations in all of our buildings and to a lot of our community partners, and really referring folks with questions to our website. We've got a great page there, Bond 2022. Every time we get questions, we put them up there and we get answers right underneath them. So it's really a great resource for our community as they look to get more questions answered about the bond. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions?
I have questions, if you would.
Yes, sir.
So, one of the things that I think is real important is what we call, what's called the horizon for the bond, the length of years in which we expect these expenditures to be spent over, not just one year. Can you describe the horizon for expenditures? How many years? Is that three years, five years, seven years? So if folks realize that this isn't just a one-year dump?
Yeah, it's certainly over, Dr. Yegar, do you want to jump in on that one?
Sure, yeah. What we're looking at is a seven-year time period. It may be shorter than seven years should, you know, assessed valuations in our community be higher than that. But we're looking at about a seven-year time period. And again, there's some pieces of legislation in Kansas that make it a little bit harder for us to go out for bond referendums and that kind of thing. So, school districts are looking for longer horizons now in terms of being able to plan and that sort of thing as well. So, you know, one of the things that we always do as a school district, you know, we're talking seven years, it would be our intention that everything within the bond is completed, certainly within that seven-year timeframe.
The second question I had related to that is that I heard at one of the events at the middle schools, that the goal was to, at some point in time, be rid of all the pea gravel in all the schools. Is that still correct?
That is correct.
Somewhere with that seven-year period?
Yeah, that is correct. You know, one of the things that severely limits our ability as a school district and why we need a longer runway sometimes is most of our work has to happen within the six to eight weeks of the summer. And many of the things we do, for example, the playground surfaces, there's actually not that many vendors in our area that do it. And so typically, you know, we're very limited to summertimes and also the vendors that are available to do it. But our intent would be to get across the district within that timeframe and have pea gravel out of everybody's washers and dryers in the Latha School District, so.
The next question I had was relative to partnering, right? You mentioned like the playing fields, partnering with the city. Are we investigating grants, federal, state, or other to, that we could tie into for two different things? So for instance, from the security and access control, are we partnering with the city and the county in any way for cooperative funds because that benefits them, it benefits us? That's part one.
So our purchasing is on the state contract, and so we do get discounts with that. And we do partner with the city and county on the public safety side in terms of our programming. Both Mr. Kager and Mr. Caldwell have access to the emergency management programming and channels in terms of communication for crisis, et cetera.
And the second part of that was relative to the playgrounds for elementary, is with so many kids in special ed, and not all the schools having what they would call an outdoor learning centers as well, in the one picture, it does show pea gravel at those tables, right? And so it's one thing to have a playground, we want everyone to have an ADA compliant and playground area. Have we looked at, and I know that the sunflower grants and things like that, there are other ways to get grants and monies from the state and the federal to supplement the replacement in those tables, the outdoor learning centers. Is there, are there been ideas and concepts to tie the renovation of the playgrounds to maybe extend some to, to those outdoor learning centers so that all our special ed kids, all of our handicapped kids, everyone with any ability or disability, whatever they may be, have benefit on both sides, not just play, but also the ability to work?
Right, yeah. And I'll say, yeah, part of the plan is to get rid of the pea gravel, period, at all of our elementary schools. And so, part of that would be resurfacing those areas where we have either outdoor learning spaces or picnic tables or whatever.
And notice, we're going to RP, those are the questions we get. And notice we're going to RFP, those are the questions we get to add. It's like, can you do this and what would that mean? And how do we allocate that? These are ideas and concepts, but I know the community that I've been talking to, they're really sensitive, that we think inclusive of all.
Absolutely.
So just planting those seeds.
One of the things I would say with thirty-six elementary schools and two early childhood centers is no two playgrounds are exactly alike. And so, you know, one of the things, and we're faced with this with most of our projects as a district, but that's one area where it really will be a site evaluation at each school. Look at what's there. You know, Mr. O'Borne shared tonight that they were almost seven hundred kids once, and now they're four hundred eleven. So, you know, that, for example, Regency Place may be a school where we're able to do some consolidation in terms of, you know, the amount of equipment and things like that. So it's hard to say this is exactly what it will look like at each school. Our commitment is that we'll get rid of the pea gravel, but outside of that, it really is kind of an evaluation at each school, working with the principal and the community to determine how to best make it work moving forward.
And then one last thing is, I know I didn't get to those bond things until after our last board meeting, but one of the things that was of critical importance is the things that I heard when I was at Santa Fe, at that event, talking to those parents and the principals, what that situation really looks like and feels like for those kids. And I know the cost of replacing, what we're talking about is replacing Santa Fe, right? And part of that, one of the questions came up was, what does it cost? Well, there are risk mitigation, what's the right word, abatement issues at that school that when we reconstruct, that it may take a little longer, it's going to be a little more expensive because of how old that school was and what it's going to take to pull it apart. And I want to make sure I said that out loud because people are like, hey, if Summit Trail only costs so much, why is Santa Fe going to cost so much more and take so much longer?
Sure.
Because there's really two issues. Can you, can you talk to that a little bit?
Part of its construction cost has certainly gone up considerably since we've built Summit Trail, very considerably since we built Summit Trail. The other piece is, as you said, Mr. Connell, there are some teardown costs with Santa Fe and some that are more challenging because there are abaintments that have to take place as part of the demolishing or demolition of that school. The thing that helps us there is we don't have to buy land, we have land on the property to build another school, where in terms of Summit Trail, we did have to purchase the land. So some of that's a wash in a little bit, but you're absolutely right that the cost to demolish the current Santa Fe is very expensive compared to some other buildings that, you know, maybe weren't built at that time range with asbestos and some of the things we'll be dealing with.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I got those out there for folks who are asking questions. Those are, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Halter?
Dr. McMullin.
Yes, ma'am.
So your last slide said mail-in ballots by March the first, but aren't they due March first at noon? Is that correct?
Yeah, they must be received at the election office by March first. So, and my understanding is those ballots will hit our mailboxes between February eighth and ninth. And so we encourage our public to send those in as quickly as possible. Certainly, the US Postal System does the best they can, but there's a little time-sensitive issue there, so encourage people to send those in right away. If people happen to forget, you get a little close, the election office will allow you to drop those off in person to their drop box as well, up until noon on the first.
Great. And the thing about that is you don't even have to get out of your car. You just drive up and put in the slot and your vote is counted.
Absolutely.
So if you're the least bit inclined to think that maybe you're running close, think you are and go by the election office.
It's great advice. It's great advice.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Dr. McMullin, just a couple of questions.
Yes.
One is about the radios. And, you know, a vote yes on this bond is certainly a vote for safety for our kids. I'm guessing that communication for Mr. Keiger with the real-time communication with our police department, upgrading our radios only helps that. Am I thinking of that correctly, not knowing the technology?
Without question. Without question. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And it allows us to also differentiate channels by building. In the old analog system, you might have two or three schools on the same channel, and on clear days, there could be crossover and feedback and things. And now each building has their own designated channel, and the communication is just instantaneous from Mr. Keiger and Mr. Caldwell, from their office here to a building. So it's imperative.
Wonderful. I understand the world of hearing aids, and we do not deal with analog hearing aids in the least, so I'm glad to know that that is the same with radios.
Yes.
My second question, it just came via text, I don't know who from, they didn't say, but the question was good, and it was about our middle school auditoriums. It just came about five-thirty, and when their question was about, are those changes that we're making just physical changes, like to chairs and to the seating, to the lighting? Or is it also changes to the, what do I want to say?
Audio?
Yeah.
Audio and visual, yes. It's comprehensive.
Okay, okay.
Audio, visual, soundboard, speakers, lighting, seats, floors.
The whole.
Complete remodel.
Shebang.
Absolutely.
For the nine out of ten.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would say real quick also, you know, we've had lots of questions coming in about the bond, which is really important to us. Will be very important to us over the next several weeks as we don't want to leave any question unanswered. John's not here tonight, so I'm happy to speak on his behalf that, you know, John, Dr. McMullin, really anybody in our team is happy to sit down with people, answer questions, go through information, all those kinds of pieces over the next few weeks, just to make sure that our community has all the information that they need or want about this bond issue. There's a lot out there, but I just want to encourage anybody that has questions to contact us, and we're happy to sit and visit with anybody, send documents via email, all those kinds of things for people that want to take a closer look at any part of it. The other part too, and I've said this, I think, at every meeting for the last three months, but it's also important for our community to remember that anything that is done with the bond still goes to our regular Board of Education processes. Any purchase over twenty thousand dollars comes before the board to provide the board and our community an opportunity to give input, ask questions, all those things. So it's, Mr. Connell said, it's not a chunk of money that just shows up on one day. It really is money that we're just, as a board, you authorize us to move forward with those projects and then bring them to you as they come up. So I think it's important to always note that as well.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving along to public comments, Mr. Wilk.
At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to two minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the two-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotape recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Toni Dringman.
Hello, my name is Toni Dringman. My husband and I have raised three children here, and we now have three grandchildren in Olathe. I'm a district employee since two thousand and three, and I'm a history teacher. A few years ago, students from Olathe North asked our previous social studies coordinator for our Black Studies or History class. Myself and an amazing teacher, Phil Simons, from Olathe North, were asked to create this curriculum for the new class. It was a huge success and has increased enrollment every year. I was asked to help with this task because of my passion for this content and the amount of classes, conferences, self-study, and cross-country trips I have made to study Black history. I've spent fifteen years incorporating Black history into my American history classes. I also help train and advise new teachers that teach this new class. Last spring, when the term CRT, or Critical Race Theory, was all over the news, I had to Google it to find out what it was and why people were upset. I am here to ask the board to stop the outrageous conversations about teachers teaching this concept. If I, with my background and what I teach, do not know what CRT is, no one in our district is teaching these concepts, no one. These concepts are taught in law school, not here, period. CRT is not diversity and inclusion education, it is not teaching Black history and other ethnicities in our history classes. I have taught thousands of students the hardest parts of US history, I have had hard conversations. Students of all ethnicities do not feel guilt or shame, what they are feeling is anger and empathy of the injustices of our past. They also feel hope and pride in the commitments of individuals that have fought to right those wrongs. We cannot stop talking about all parts of American history, we cannot stop talking about race. Our students want to learn this content and they want to have these conversations. All students need to see themselves in the curriculum, they need to see themselves on the walls of our classroom. One brilliant, beautiful student recently reminded a group of teachers this. He said, "When I was younger and I never read a story or learned about someone that looked like me, and all I saw were white people, I hated myself. I thought because I was not white, something was wrong with me. It wasn't until high school when I learned more diverse content, I learned more about my history, did I learn to love myself." We as a district, a board, a community, need to continue teaching a curriculum that teaches the whole story of America. If you, the board, would like to learn to know more, I'm happy to hold Zoom classes for each of you to learn this content. It is not CRT, it's American history, and all of its tragedy and all of its glory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kamal Prekor.
Good evening, my name is Kumul, and I'm a senior at East. I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my story with you. I was born and raised in Queens, New York, and my parents immigrated from Punjab, a northern state in India, because they were fleeing genocide. The Indian government ordered a mass attack against the people of the Sikh religion. There was an extensive amount of abuse my community faced, and my grandparents decided they needed to send their kids away. My dad came to America with a few dollars, he knew no one and nothing. My parents took down concrete and brick walls that were meant to stay up to give me the life I have today, and they were successful. When I moved to Kansas, I hated it here, but over the past four years, I've began to love this state more than I'd like to admit, and that is because of our school system. My dad often says, "Mel de la raja," which directly translates to "urine over what you have." I know what it's like not having teachers and administrators who care about me, and I'm proud to say, Olathe East is different. I can walk into Mrs. Lane's office, my principal, and she'll welcome me with open arms. Mr. Taylor, one of our sister principals, is always ready to crack a joke and catch the kid running late to class. And my debate coach, Mrs. Goddard, she's been my biggest supporter since freshman year, and her door is always open. This year, my administrators and teachers have risen for me and my peers. Students are tired of what happens in this room. For the first time in high school, I've actually been worried about my education. From the day we walk into a classroom to the day we leave and graduate, we are constantly taught about the importance of working together respectfully. We expect that from our leaders and our community members. Over the past four years of high school, I have been the two-time elected co-chair of the Olathe Teen Council, and I've started a nonprofit organization with 501(c)(3) certification to help people like my parents build roots in this amazing country. I am a product of the Olathe School District. Everyone has been wanting to put students first, but we don't know what students want. So let's start hearing stories of students that, once the graduating classes leave their schools, our presence will echo through the hallways and we will keep the momentum and drive alive amongst the rest of our peers. Now that's an OPS moments that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Claire Reagan.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your service to our community. I also appreciate that the public comment portion of this meeting comes after recognitions and presentations. Sitting here, listening to what makes our district great underscores why I am back here again to speak to you. My name is Claire Reagan, I am a proud mother of one future and two current Olathe School students. I am also a former public and private high school English teacher. I taught for fourteen years, all here in Johnson County. Most recently, I've begun subbing in our district. I've only subbed three days so far, but I can tell you that the level of gratitude I've experienced is directly proportional to the urgency and desperation of this moment. We are so glad you're here. Thank you for doing what you can. I've heard as much so many times in person and on social media. While I do want to make sure to recognize the amazing work done each and every day by our Olathe educators, from the video our son's teacher made of her reading "Twas the Night Before the Snow Day" on Thursday night, to the weekly calls I get from his resource teacher about his progress, to the detailed subplans I've seen that I know take hours to prepare, I do want to reiterate that I also see an alarming shift. When I started education in two thousand and seven, and the recession hit soon after, salaries were frozen, people were worried, I'm sure we all remember. Fortunately, we as teachers were able to weather the budget crisis because we had energy to spare and community support. Experienced colleagues still had something left to give their novice counterparts, and I'm so grateful for that. The climate of today and the hostility toward our public schools has left so many people depleted, and that's why teachers, administrators, and other important professionals are considering leaving education. And that's why many are hesitant to encourage our young people to enter the field, which absolutely breaks my heart. In the long run, many of the arguments that are taking up oxygen in these meetings and on social media won't matter if we don't have a pipeline of qualified, passionate professionals here to educate our kids. I ask you and our community to find ways to support our educators, because well-supported educators empower our Olathe kids to their own and our collective success. Thank you.
Tiffany Seaman.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Tiffany Seaman, and I am a former educator of the Olathe Public School District, and currently two of my three children attend the district. As I thought about what I wanted to say this evening, I really just wanted to show my deepest gratitude to our educators and staff. They are the ones that make our community so strong. I could say to our educators that I have been in your shoes, but that just wouldn't be the truth. I have not been in this school or classroom setting since two thousand and nineteen, when my family moved out of state, and we were happy to move back to Olathe. Teaching was a big job then, but I have not taught during a pandemic or during a time when many other concerns and issues have been in the forefront of the conversations related to our schools. I want all of our educators and staff to know that you are seen and you are appreciated. We recognize that you are exhausted, we want to help and support you. I am sad that you are not able to appreciate the pure joys of teaching. Our community thrives because of you. I was reminded of this gift that was shared with me and just wanted, and how appreciated it made me feel as an educator, so I wanted to pass it along. It means more now than ever. This is an excerpt from "The Star Polisher" by Leah Beck's. "I have a great job in the universe of occupations. What do I do? I am a star polisher. You see, I am a teacher. The stars are the children in my class. My job is to take them in, in whatever shape they come, and shine them and buff them, and then send them out to take their places as bright, little twinkling beacons in the sky. They come into my room in all shapes and sizes, sometimes they're bent, tarnished, dirty, crinkly, and broken. Some stars are cuddly, soft, and sweet, some stars are prickly and thorny. As I buff, polish, train, and teach my little stars, I tell them that the world cannot do without them. I tell them that the world will be a better place because of them. Each night, as I look at the sky, I'm reminded of my very important job and awesome responsibility. Now it is our turn to be the star polishers, to buff and shine our educators and staff, to lift them up in any and every way possible. Our community cannot afford to lose these shining stars. Let's all come together to show our support. Thank you for your time, service, and consideration."
Thank you. Next up is Cassidy Steele.
I just want to start off by saying, thank you for letting me speak today and giving me the opportunity to express my concerns. My name is Cassidy Steele, and I am currently a senior at Olathe East High School. Throughout my four years in the school district, it has always bothered me how mental health and depression have been approached. I have watched in the past how the school district has handled mental health, acting as if simply being grateful and showing gratitude will fix the mental plague that is depression. But if you put a Band-Aid on a bullet wound, it doesn't fix the underlying problem. Mental health is not a problem to be solved or an issue that needs to be fixed. We are human beings with thoughts, emotions, and feelings, people who deserve to be heard and listened to, people who are begging for help, for someone to let them know they are heard and that they are not alone. Students need to feel safe in sharing their internal struggles with not just their peers, but also the staff in this school district. They should not have to worry about if they will be taken seriously or not. They should not have to worry about if their mental health or suicidal thoughts are going to interfere with their homework. This is your future generation. These are the people who will make up your future school board, who will one day change your world, because it is not a matter of if we will be able to change the world, it is only a matter of when and how we will do so. So I'm here today to implore you to make the changes to prevent future tragedies, because if things continue the way they have been going, the next time a student in this district attempts or even succeeds in killing themselves, you won't have to think if you could have prevented it. You'll know.
Next up is Bree Leahy.
As I sat today with my children running around me, fighting or playing, I'm not really sure which, I began to question some things. I know I'd absolutely love if one of you would step up and answer the questions for all of us tonight. One, what sort of written plan is there regarding the masking? When can we remove masks for middle and elementary? When can we remove masks for middle and elementary schools or just go to optional masking? Are we just going to keep talking about it month after month and never get anywhere? Two, looking at the upcoming school year, are we going to expect another bait and switch where we are told that we will be maskless and then even mask optional, and then the last moment after enrollment require them to mask back up? I get that no one has a crystal ball, but what is the written plan to get us to mask optional? Three, let's talk about absentee percentages. How are you going to accurately account for those out of school? To give an example that occurred with a dear friend of mine this past week, her son missed school due to not feeling well. She took her son to the doctor where the doctor determined it was not COVID and signed a form stating such. The student took the form back to the school and was supposed to go back to class. However, he was held hostage for nearly two hours in the nurse's office because he had a mask exemption, and sending him back to the class made the nurse nervous. The nurse counted this child as a COVID illness, even though he never had COVID. Now let's fast forward to this upcoming week with the short week of school. It's a well-known fact that students will be gone as they start their vacations early, mine included. Will all of those absences be counted as COVID? What sort of system do you have to ensure that your nursing staff is in line and things are going to be held and documented accurately? And finally, I understand the Department of Education has a universal mask requirement attached to its federal ARP funds that the Kansas Department of Education Commission resigned to request the money to divvy out to Kansas schools. Olathe Public Schools received millions of dollars of ARP money from the KSDE, who stated the schools would be masked in their plans. My last questions are these. Has masks been on our kids to satisfy a requirement of federal money? And if so, can we just be told that? Those funds expire in September of 2023, so do we intend to keep our masks, our kids in masks until the CDC changes the mask guideline for the year of 2023? Now it makes sense why schools are the only ones that are masked in our county. All we want is answers and transparency. Thank you.
Caitlin Freed.
Good evening, Board. My name is Caitlin Freed, and I'm the mother of four children, two of which attend school in the district. I'm coming before you all to plead with you to make masks optional. I know it may seem like we are all a bunch of disgruntled parents who are lacking in divisive situations at home, but I assure you, this is not the case at all. In fact, those of you who don't know me, I'm the most average of all average people. I'm a middle-of-the-pack kind of person, but my children and their future selves mean enough to me to suffer through a few minutes of being uncomfortable. I firmly believe that you are all doing what you believe will keep our children safe in school, and I so appreciate that. But I assure you, this is not one size fits all. Each child is so unique and special and requires individual consideration. You do not know what is best for my child any more than I know what's best for yours. That is why it is imperative that those of us who have vested interests in our children are able to make the decision to mask or not based on our children's individual self. I'm not going to throw a bunch of data or numbers at you, I'd rather come to with my own personal experience. My two sons in the district were granted mask exemptions in October. My fourth grader has been thriving being able to attend school without a face covering. But my second grader is not as lucky. He has yet to have a quote "normal" school year and doesn't even remember school without masks. From the day his paperwork was approved, he has yet to attend school without a mask. His reasoning? Everyone else is wearing one, people are used to seeing him with a mask, and he doesn't want to stand up. So not only has this robbed him of a normal school year, it's now robbing him of his individuality. He's so afraid to stand out and be different that he has it, that he will, that he hasn't had a complete meltdown when he learns he's forgotten his mask at home. This breaks my heart. He's losing more and more of himself every day. I'm not only concerned for my own children's well-being, I'm concerned for all children's well-being, living behind and surrounded by masks. I remember teaching my kids about emotions with books. Do you think this person's happy or sad? How do you know that? We know that by looking at their face, their whole face. Being able to see and recognize others' emotions is the first step in learning my empathy. I don't know about you, but my children need all the help they can get when it comes to empathy. These masks are negatively impacting our children's mental and emotional health, and without of control increase in suicides, we cannot afford to be complacent in this matter. I urge each of you to stand up for our kids, make masks optional, and allow the parents to parent their children.
First of all, I concur with the upcoming comments of Angela Schweller, she'll speak in a couple of minutes. Additionally, I'm also here to remind the board of the lawsuit case versus the Olathe School District in 1995, in which the Olathe School Board was sued for the decision to ban "Any on My Mind", which is a book depicting a fictional romantic relationship between two teenage girls. Olathe Board of Education lost that lawsuit. The judge ruled that the superintendent and the members of the Board of Education had removed the novel from school libraries, quote, "because they disagreed with ideas expressed in the book and intended to deny students in the district access to those ideas," end quote. The court's decision was a victory for the First Amendment rights of students to have access to diverse ideas and information. School boards and administrators should not be micromanaging teachers and their libraries. Our district has a policy already in place for situations in which parents object to specific lessons or topics discussed in classrooms, and they should publicize it more broadly. Rather than calling for a book to be removed from shelves, which prevents all students from accessing the material, parents are directed to communicate with their child's classroom teacher if they have concerns about the content of a reading assignment or book. Censorship has nothing to do with protecting children. It has to do with protecting adults who want to avoid having difficult conversations with children. Freedom of speech means protecting all speech, even when you disagree with what is being said. As a mother raising two independent thinkers, my goal is to work in partnership with their teachers to foster critical thinking and to teach my children discernment and good judgment. It's time that we treat teachers as professionals and work together in concert with them for the greater good of our children and of society as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Moses Moba.
My name is Moses Moba, an 11-year-old fifth grader, and I am the only one without a mask in my grade. And I, and I have to deal with being asked to wear a mask and why I don't wear a mask every few days. Um, this speech I'm about to say is based off of Martin Luther King's speech, but about what, what is today. I say to you today that this is not what school is supposed to be like. We shouldn't wear masks or get tested for a virus that, that is not that dangerous. I have a dream that we will not be required to wear masks. I have a dream that we will decide if we get tested. I have a dream that we will have freedom to see each other's faces. I have a dream that these unconstitutional mandates will end. I have a dream today. I have a dream that we will be free to see faces. I have a dream the Olathe School District will choose freedom and faith over fear. This is my dream that it should not be the school board's decision, but the parents' decision whether we wear masks or get tested. Thank you.
Next up is Angela Schweller.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. I'm wearing my "Not Your Daughter" shirt tonight because as someone whose daughter was a former student of James Loganville, I took interest in stopping predators like him going under the radar in our schools. This last fall, the mom in the case against Loganville and I met with Superintendent Jaeger to get an update regarding the "Not Your Daughter" request to make our district safer. We left that meeting feeling like the district had made improvements and was headed in the right direction. Unfortunately, it seems that old patterns of protecting district employees guilty of harmful behavior are still happening. When a woman, when women who have devoted their career to the Olathe schools and community are not able to work in a safe, discrimination-free space, that's a problem. Board policy states, "The Board of Education is committed to providing a positive and productive working and learning environment, free from discrimination on the basis of sex, including sexual harassment. Discrimination on sex, including sexual harassment, will not be tolerated in the school district. How can we as a district say we value diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then allow what is happening to these women educators and personnel, some of whom are too scared to even speak up? I'm asking the board to take action now in the following ways. Remove the person who was found in violation of sexual harassment from their current position, where he still works with and over women who came forward. Create policy that states anyone found to be in violation of sexual harassment will no longer be allowed to stay in their position working with or over the accusers. And lastly, that the board does a thorough investigation of these incidents and the allegations of retaliation against the accusers. It is your responsibility to protect the women who were victimized. I want to feel proud of our school district, but not at the expense of these victims of sexual harassment. In the words of the "Not Your Daughter" movement, "It's time to take a stand and end predatory behavior. Not your daughter, not your son, not our children, and I'm going to add, not our educators." Thank you.
Next up is Lisa Koontz.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Koontz. I'm a parent of two elementary students. My judgment and rights as a parent were respected by our doctor, and my children have a mask exemption. But I'm still here because I care. I am here to continue to advocate and fight for all the children who are silenced and traumatized behind a mask at school. I've had parents and teachers reach out to me to tell me their stories, and I'm here to share their accounts of the abuse that's occurring. Fifth grader, Black Bob Elementary. "I don't want to go to school tomorrow." "Why? What's going on, honey?" "It's just the masks, I'm so sick of it all. It's so hard seeing everyone in masks, especially those little kindergartners. It just makes me so sad." Third grader, Cedar Creek Elementary. "I can't breathe and don't understand why I need to wear a mask if I'm not sick." Seventh grader, Middle School, or Middle, woo, Mission Trail Middle School. "I can't wait until this masking is over so I can actually focus and breathe." High school student with anxiety. "Mom, I forgot how terrifying it is to walk into a school full of masked kids, and I'm the only one unmasked. Everyone's staring and asking why I'm not masked, this sucks so bad." Parent of high school student. "She had one teacher approach her and tell her she knows she has an exemption, but if she feels unsafe or would prefer to wear one, to let her know and she would provide her one." Kindergarten teacher. "I want to bawl my eyes out every day watching these adorable faces being muzzled." Parent, Olathe Northwest. "My daughter has an exemption due to anxiety, but is afraid to turn it in because of how two teachers were retaliating. One of them has called the non-maskers 'babies.'" Parent, French Ruchero Middle School. "I offered to obtain a mask exemption for my son, but he does not want to be the only kid without one to keep to explaining to his peers and teachers and have been forced to put one on. He told me that one teacher is super mean about masks. If any kid is caught with it below her nose, she yells at them and kicks them out of class." Parent, Black Bob Elementary. "I bought my son a thinner mask, he was so excited that he could actually breathe in it. He wore it today and told the teacher he could actually breathe today. So the teacher sent him to the office, who then called me and said it's considered a mesh see-through, and therefore gave him a paper disposable mask and sent him back to class. How sad to see that his joy in one remark over being able to breathe easier resulted in that. All kids should be able to feel like they can breathe every single day. Imagine how that kid feels as a kid. Sorry, you were breathing normally. Stop doing that, you're being reprimanded now. Here's a paper muzzle, off you go."
I'm good, your time's up.
Thank you.
Next up is Eric Pirenton.
Thank you. The Board of County Commissioners, I met on July 29, 2021, for an agenda review meeting. The video of this meeting is on the BOCC website, it's 26 minutes, 42 seconds long. At the 16 and a half minute mark, there's a seven-minute discussion with the board's chief legal counsel, Peg Trent, where they all discuss if school districts have home rule that allows school districts to opt in or out of the Board of the Board of Public Health so-called mandates that are really just guidelines. They're guidelines per the board's own chief legal counsel, Peg Trent. Their own lawyer stated this, and they all agreed with that in this open public meeting. You can watch the video for yourself. The board members even refer to the mask mandate as just recommendations. It's Google Johnson County Board of County Commissioners, July 29, 2021, you'll find the video. The Board of County Commissioners met a week later on August 5, 2021. You can find this video on the BOCC Facebook page, the video is four hours, 20 minutes long. At the 3 hour 53 minute mark, Commissioner O'Hara repeats the legal counsel's advice quoting, "Even if we pass this, approve it, the school districts under home rule may opt out." No commissioners disputed this. Multiple commissioners stated the reason for their support in this mandate was the lack of vaccine available to this age group, K through 6 on the county. Later in that meeting, a motion was asked to mask high schoolers, it failed, with several commissioners saying that if they were to vote to mask high schoolers who had the vaccine available for two months at the time, they felt they would need to impose a mask mandate on the entire community population. It's been three and a half months now that the vaccines have been available to kids five and older. It's beyond time to end the mask mandate. Months from now, we're going to look back at this, at today, and we'll look back on this silly K through 8 mask mandate, the same way we now look back on the silliness of closing down playgrounds and taping them off with caution tape, or putting little arrows, one-way arrows down the floor, nobody followed those, we all thought those are silly. Back in the spring of 2020, we closed down the district athletic tracks and told people, "Oh, don't go to the tracks, you'll catch COVID." Looking back on that, it was silly, we're going to look back on this the same way. And I would say too, if I may, to the people speaking, there's some PAC groups here. Speak about hiring more teachers to reduce class sizes, you'll gain more support. And those concerned about book censorship, you'll gain more ground too if you just acknowledge that parents don't want graphic sex scenes in novels in K through 12 libraries. Thank you.
And now we are going to go to the video board for Sarah Cottington. We've got somebody on virtual that we're waiting on.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good. Uh, my name is Sarah Cottington, I am a parent and educator in Olathe. You are likely familiar with the saying, "You get what you get and you don't throw a fit." It applies to necessary difficulties and things beyond control, of which we have seen many these past few years. Tonight, however, I need to speak about a problem that is within your control, which means that the earlier saying just doesn't stand. This topic, and my knowledge of how many people in our district have been affected, turns my stomach. The problem I wish to address tonight is this. We are tolerating sexual harassment in our district. The board policy states, "The Board of Education is committed to providing a positive and productive working and learning environment, and that sexual harassment will not be tolerated in the school district." Why does policy state harassment will not be tolerated, yet potential consequences are disparate enough that a perpetrator might be dismissed from employment or might just receive a disciplinary letter in their personnel file? In the case of a disciplinary letter, such non-response is demeaning and permits a culture in which harassment is accepted as a norm. This issue requires leadership, leadership that doesn't permit staff to be dehumanized by other staff. At a minimum, leadership requires honest attempts to adequately address current issues and concerted effort at creating a truly safe environment. When harassment goes unaddressed, we might end up with an entire building in which employees do not feel safe at work. Imagine trying to get the best out of your staff when they don't feel safe. In addition to these basics, I ask for an investigation and audit into the occurrences of discrimination and harassment in our district. As the board, you need to examine this data carefully so you can truly understand the scope of these problems. Seek to know what settings and situations have led to wrongdoing and to answer questions such as how many staff are affected? How do we move forward? Your employees, your students, your public need to know that you stand behind the board policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more. Oh, okay, one more virtual speaker maybe, Christina Hill.
Christina Hill is not currently present in the Zoom meeting.
Okay. All right, that concludes our public comments then, thank you very much. All right, we are on to action consent. Does anyone have any questions about 6.01 through 6.09?
I wanted to highlight 6.09.
Okay.
Dr. Jaeger, you could probably speak better about this, but could you tell a little bit of the story behind this?
You know, actually, Kim Dahl, our ELA secondary coordinator is here. I may ask her to pop up, are you prepared to do that, Kim? I see you back there.
Sorry to cut you on the spot.
You know, to, to tell us a little bit about this course.
Thanks, Kim.
Am I just, am I answering questions or am I giving a spiel?
Would you just give us, surprise, surprise, Kim?
Okay, don't worry.
Would you, would you give us just kind of an overview of the courses and, and those related pieces?
Sure. So, um, English Careers III that you saw and you are looking at on the...
Kim, go right ahead.
Sorry.
It was the story of how, the genesis of this, how it started.
So some teachers and administrators at OATC worked together. They saw a need. They realized that several students who were attending OATC and Olathe North were struggling to feel engaged in the, in the, what I would call the traditional English classroom, right? And the traditional English classroom puts a lot of emphasis on literature. That's what we like to do. We like to read the literature and do literary analysis and argument towards that. And so they got together and really came to Dr. Jaeger and I, actually, with a plan to try to pilot this idea of turning that on its head and trying to reach students who maybe literature isn't their thing, but they are, would much rather engage in informational text. And so that's where this course was born, is that we wanted to just reach more students and see if we could engage them in our English courses through the informational text. So ultimately, the class just takes the standards of reading literature and reading informational and flips them. So it's much heavier in the informational and technical writing and reading than our traditional class.
I just love that. It's a creative way to meet the needs. It's just an excellent story. So thank you for sharing it.
Sure.
Thank you, Kim. All right. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion for 09.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 6.01 to 6.09.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter, second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
All right. And there is no action bids, contracts, or agreements, so we're on to action other, 8.01. Dr. Jaeger moving to the podium.
I have missed the opportunity to talk to you from this spot versus that spot, so...
Don't get comfortable.
What'd you say?
Don't get comfortable.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to spend a little bit of time tonight walking through some of our COVID data that we have as a system. I also will share some additional information. I do have a recommendation in this, this presentation as well. So when I get back to that point, I'll pop up there after I've answered questions and things like that. I just wanted to start briefly tonight by sharing our new COVID dashboard. You know, one of the things that has become challenging for us as a system is to monitor the data that is, lack of a better term, somewhat squishy. The data that we rely completely on families or physicians, those kinds of things, positivity cases and things like that. So as our team really sat and looked at our dashboard a number of weeks ago, I think it was the week after our last board meeting, we really talked about the importance of moving to a place where it was data that we could readily pull out of systems in our district, so that we knew that the data was, on our dashboard was absolutely accurate in terms of what we were trying to represent. So I will tell you that with all things, in a system with 30,000 kids almost and over 5,000 employees, there are a few human errors still in our data and those kinds of things. But when you talk about the large numbers that we talk about within our system, averages and the overall numbers are really important to us. But I wanted to start just briefly by going to our new dashboard. All right. In my old job, a lot of times when I did that, it didn't work, so this is, this is good. I wanted to spend just a minute looking at our new dashboard. So our new dashboard, a couple of things I'd like to point out first. You know, it's kind of the, the information that we continue to provide, but we do have, for the public that's interested, we have archived our old dashboard. So any of the information that somebody would like to go and look at, our old dashboard is accessible there with all the data that was there. We have information about, you know, our masking status information, and so that, for example, is our high schools, if you will, and where they are in terms of their masking right now. That's on there. Our current mask mandate, testing information, but then the piece that's really important to us is absentees by schools. So you're able to look at all the absentee numbers by all of our schools in terms of a chart, and we'll post these on a weekly basis. And it has the daily absentees as well as the weekly absentee percentages. When we talk about absentee rates in the Olathe Public School District, what we're looking at is students that are either sick, considered sick when their parents call in, or if we're notified from the MOD testing site in our district that a student has COVID, those students are counted as absent because they're sick. The other one is the excused area, or the two areas that we focus on. That's several things in the excused area. That could be a student that's on a school trip. It could be a student who is on a vacation. It could be a student whose family just calls and says, "We're not going to tell you why they're not there today, but we're keeping our kid home." So there's, there's some of that there, too. And those are the matrices that we've used for years and years in our system. So that's on there. We also have COVID testing at our MOD site. So again, that's our relationship with MOD laboratories in district where we test students, staff, and family members of students or staff who, excuse me, at this point are symptomatic for, for COVID. So that's there. We also have staff, staff absences each week, too, that we'll put there. So for example, last week, we had 2,309 total staff absences, 1,754 requests for subs, and 91.7% of our absentee subrequests filled, which, by the way, is an amazing number for what we're doing. But I'll talk more about that in a minute. So that's what our new dashboard looks like. We tried to really synthesize the information on it. Our old dashboard was getting pretty robust in terms of all the data that was there. We wanted people to be able to go to this dashboard, get their hands on some data quickly by school and also at the district. Can I answer any questions about that?
Okay. Quick question for you.
Please.
You just mentioned that in absentees, there's two buckets, sick and excused, right?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
But when I was looking on the dashboards, I just see an aggregation of the whole.
You do.
Do we, are we, is there a separation out in the system somewhere, and are we going to put that on the dashboard?
You know, we have, we have never done that. Historically, as we, as we've worked with the Health Department on absentees, the trend data that I'm going to show you over three years, it's apples to apples. It's the same kind of data. We don't usually delineate out, delineate it out that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our district testing with MOD. We started our testing in October. October, November, and December, literally, we tested anybody that was connected to our district that felt like they wanted to be tested. In January, we got to the point where we were mostly testing people who were symptomatic. It became very hard to get appointments and those kinds of things. And by the numbers, you see that. October and November, our, our numbers were inching up. You can see in January, we did over 10,000 tests. You know, we were doing a pretty good job of keeping up with the demand until January, and it really became hard for us to do that as a system. But we continue to be pleased that we have that available for our staff, students, and our families that are connected to our district. But that's an important measure for us. You also will note that we started Test to Stay on November 8th. Again, we still have the availability for that, but we are not enforcing that as a school system. There's lots of options for families, including not testing and those kinds of things on our, and that's all on our website as well. And then the percent positive at the MOD site, you can see in October, we were about 7.5%. November, we were about 9%. December, we were about the same. And then in January, we went way up to just over 28% positivity. Again, this number is, is one that a lot of statisticians could probably tear apart one way or the other, primarily because we tested, tested a lot of people who were symptomatic, and so the percent positive likely went up because of that. But we did know that we had a lot more COVID, obviously, in our community and within our district at that time because of the numbers we were seeing there. Can I answer any questions about that? Okay. I'm batting a thousand from my old seat. All right. So when you look at monthly subrequests, that's another measure that's very important to us. This isn't all absentees or our staff in general. This is certified staff members who, when they're absent, require a substitute so students can be served. These are the numbers that we have worked through this year. So August, obviously, and December are not full months, so those numbers are obviously a little bit lower in terms of those numbers. January was the highest that we have ever seen as a school district, and, you know, obviously, you knew that would probably be the case. You know, we had 340 more subrequests. Our fill rate was pretty high in January, but as you see on my second bullet to the right, is our Learning Services Division, as you know, was closed for, for much, much of the month, and, you know, helping with between 35 to 65 subs a day to keep our schools open and that kind of thing. So questions I can answer about that?
Sure. Quick question.
Please.
In the month of January, 4,675 total requests. The number that averages out about one subrequest per employee, is that pretty close?
No.
How many employees in the district?
Well, we have about 2,700 certified licensed employees, so that would mean if you took it per employee, it would be just certified.
I thought you said it included classified staff.
No, this is just certified licensed staff. So these are only the folks that gets up.
That's right.
Good question. Okay. And these are our fill rates. Again, I'm really proud of these fill rates. You know, our fill rates as a district remain high. That's obviously a testament to our staff that's coming to work when they maybe don't feel like it some days, or they're exhausted, that kind of thing. They continue to do that to help themselves and their colleagues and our kids, which we appreciate so much. Also, our Learning Services staff, and, and really the plea to our community to say, "Can you help us even one or two days a month?" That's really helped us as well. So all those pieces continue to keep our rates pretty high, if you will, as overall percentages. And again, that Learning Services piece has helped us a lot, too, especially in January, keeping our, our fill rates as high as they are. I will tell you, this week on Monday and Tuesday, and last week, our rates were in the mid-90s most days, so it does look like we're heading in the right direction in terms of our overall fill rate and substitute request and that kind of thing. And this is a piece that may be most interesting. So this is a January look at our attendance over the last three years. So the first bar on the left is 2020. So as a reminder, that was right before COVID started, so we had no impact of COVID on our attendance then. The next bar to the right is 2021, so it would have been last year in January. And the bar on the right is this year in terms of January attendance. So that's all four of those weeks, if you will, combined to see what the difference is. So you can see that, again, each of these Januaries, the data is consistent. It's unexcused absences and, or I'm sorry, excused absences and students who are counted as sick as absences, the consistent data was used to put all these together. So in terms of absences from school, this January has certainly been more challenging than, than our Januaries over the past two years.
Dr. Jaeger, in looking at those numbers, we were in masks January a year ago, or we were in remote.
We would have been in masks.
At the elementary.
I don't remember.
Just the elementary.
Say it again.
Yeah, at the elementary.
Okay. We, I knew we would, we would have been in masks, and I think we were in person.
So the, the bar on the right for 2022 in elementary, teachers, staff, and kids were fully masked 100% of the time.
Correct.
And yet the numbers are off the chart, so that reflects Omicron and not the school, right?
You know, as a health professional, I'm not a health professional, so I don't know that I really want to answer that question. I think we could all probably hypothesize in a lot of different ways why it is that way, but I probably wouldn't want to give a less-than-educated guess on that. If you look at, and again, this is, Mr. Connell said, this is elementary. The next one is middle school. Again, the trends are fairly similar. You notice the fourth week in January, things look like they're beginning to come down in terms of overall student attendance or students missing school. And this is high school, and again, same kind of trend as you compare year over year there.
The left side, is it percentage?
I'm sorry?
The left side of your graph?
Yeah, it's percentage. So the bottom is 0%, the top would be up to 12% absent.
Just making sure.
Yep, that's correct. And then if we look at all of them together, this is the district average that combines elementary, middle, and high school over those three years as well. I will tell you, just as information, Tuesday this week is the most up-to-date information that I have. Tuesday this week, our average at elementary was 5.48% absent. Middle school was 4.66% absent, and high school was 3.73% absent. So, you know, if I added another bar to the right that looked at the first week of February, or the, the, this two days this week anyway, it would stair-step down again. So it does appear that based on all of our matrix, that our attendance, our absences, all those things with our staff are headed in the right direction at this time.
Dr. Jaeger, so in looking at the statistical trends from 2020, which was prior to, we even know when they were.
Sure.
The numbers do look, in elementary school attendance, or let's see, let's do elementary, averaged for the past three years, 4%, 4%, 4%, 4%. So that seems like a baseline. Middle school, the baseline seems to be between 3, 3 and 4% for the last three years prior, right? And even at the high school level, we statistically look like three years consistently hit between a minimum of 4% as a baseline and as high as 5%. So when we're at current numbers, even 7, 8, or 9, there's always been a baseline of about 4% to 5% of natural attendance issues this time of year, from flu to stomach viruses to travel. Would that be fair to say that there seems to be a...
I would say it's 3.5% to 5%. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I was reading.
Yeah. I would say that's accurate. Can I answer any other questions about the data I've shared here before I kind of share my recommendation, and then also one more piece of data before maybe you talk about the, the motion that's on 7.01 or 8.01? Okay. So one of the things that we continue to think about is the best possible way for us to make decisions as a school district with our communities, so they have accurate, up-to-date data, so they know what will be happening. In November, per our recommendation, the Board adopted as part of our great gating criteria, looking at isolations, quarantines as one measure, and also looking at attendance as another measure. The isolation quarantine thing, and, you know, in November, wasn't off the charts like it was in January, and we were able to support the Health Department in terms of doing some contact tracing and things like that. As you know, now we are no longer doing that. So the data that we have in terms of isolations and quarantines is inaccurate. You know, we don't have a way to get that data accurate. So as we move forward, we feel like our attendance matrix is probably the best way for us to determine where we are in terms of an accurate number that we can measure and analyze as a school district, even on a daily basis. And so my recommendation tonight is that we remove the measure of quarantine and isolation from our optional masking and maintain the measure of absentee rate of 7% as established in November. I will say that kind of 5% to 7% is historically where we begin to talk with Health Department about, hey, there's something going on in our schools here. We just need to make you aware, where they could come in at 10% and say, gosh, let's close some classrooms, let's close the schools, things like that. I will tell you in full transparency, during this COVID season, and you can see this on our attendance, we've had schools well over 10%. That hasn't happened. But the reason why we chose 7% as a system is we want the ability to intervene before the Health Department would come in and say, you have to close the school. We'd like to be able to keep our kids in school learning and that kind of thing. So that's how we established the 7% when we did that. I will also say that if we took, and this is for example purposes only, but then big words at the bottom, but if we took yesterday's attendance or Tuesday's attendance this week, you can see all the schools that would be in optional masking. The only schools that we would have where masking would be mandatory for two weeks based on just the criteria of 7% absentee rate would be those five schools, maybe six schools at the bottom there. Those would be the only schools. And again, what we do with that is, once a school's gone above 7%, as soon as they stay below that 7% for 14 consecutive days, not 14 school days, just 14 days, then the mask go back to option and come up again at that time. mask go back to option and come up again at that time. So, on the previous side, there is my recommendation to the board tonight.
And we would, would remove this data point because it's not accurate?
We would remove the isolation quarantine piece because it's no longer accurate for us. That's correct.
Because we're not doing contact tracing?
Correct.
And neither is the county?
The county's trying to do a little, but no, not really. Yes. Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Nobody has any questions about that or wants any more discussion about that motion? I'd entertain a motion as Dr. Yeager suggested.
So, Lou.
I need to hear anything.
I have, I have one thing I would ask, if I could ask.
Sure.
Dr. Yeager. Um, because I'm looking at the numbers, right? So, the recommendation you have is to maintain the absentee rate of 7%. Did anyone on your staff take a look at whether 8% would make any significant difference? I'm looking at those handful of elementaries and there are some, it wouldn't make a difference at this point in time. They're at 12 or 13%, right? They're way off the charts and there must be other reasons kids are missing, right? But some of them I see, their weekly average percentages were below 8%. Did you all look into that or identify that or was it really just, what does it do to 7%?
Uh, we looked at what it did for 7%. Again, you know, our thought was, you know, that typically before COVID and working with the Health Department, we would start visiting with them between 5 and 7%, closer to 5%. And we felt like 7% would give us some allowance, if you would, for the challenges related to COVID, but also still give us an opportunity to potentially intervene before the Health Department would. Again, I don't know that the Health Department's going to be doing that right now just based on where numbers are with COVID, but that's how we established the 7%. And, you know, as, as you mentioned, if we went up to 8%, we likely would have a couple more schools that would be optional masking. If we went down to six, we'd probably have a couple more en masse. I mean, so there, no, no matter what we choose, there would be some schools impacted one way or the other based on their attendance.
Would it be correct, Dr. Yeager, that historically, when the county has intervened, it's been at a school, I call it location or facility-based kind of conversation? They've looked at, you know, one school here maybe had rotavirus or they had flu or they, their historical model of intervening is facility by facility, right? Or?
Yeah, yes, that, that's a great point. That's exactly right. And that's one of the reasons why we established in our recommendation to the board in November was to have a gating criteria that really took into account a school-by-school measure for very much the same reason, rather than the same thing just in a blanket way across the district. But yes, to answer your question, when we've had a, you know, a communicable disease outbreak in a school, they'll work at that school site and make the best decision based on that. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, recommendation from staff under 8.01. Does anyone have any other questions about that? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to remove the measure of quarantine slash isolation from the optional masking criteria and maintain the measure of absentee rate of 7% as established in November.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wickliff, was Mr. Boyd?
Yep.
Okay. Second by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
All right, and now we are on to 8.02. Leeta, I'll let you.
Great. Did you want to say anything? I'm just making sure. I thought you said something that when you came back over there, you'd say something else. Am I, about your previous presentation? I didn't want to talk over, I think you got everything out.
It, it may come back to me, but.
If it does, just interrupt. But yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion. I move to implement building level mitigation practices district-wide and to apply the Alatha Public School mandatory optional mask gating criteria to all schools across the district effective February 18th, 2022, with the expectation that our matrix will be reviewed on a regular basis and adjusted as our data and the County Health Department guidance begins to provide a clearer path forward.
All right.
Do we need a second before?
No, I think we'll have, well, yeah, before we have discussion, but I think what we're going to do is have Barb read it again, so we have it correct. Does that sound okay to you?
Sounds good.
All right.
So, it is, I moved, or moved to implement building level mitigation practices district-wide and to apply the Alatha Public School optional mandatory mask gating criteria to all schools across the district effective February 18th, 2022, with the exception that our matrix will be reviewed on a regular basis and adjusted as our data and County Health Department guidance begins to provide a clearer path forward.
Great. And it's instead of exception, it's expectation.
Expectation.
With the expectation that our matrix?
Thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion by Ms. Felter. Second?
I second the motion.
Second by Mr. Connell. We can have some discussion.
Thank you.
Ms. Felter?
If you wouldn't mind.
If you'd like to go first.
Yeah, I'd love to give my oral argument. So, we just reviewed the gating criteria, so I won't talk about that, but they, uh, we are at a different time and place in the pandemic. At the start of the pandemic, our mitigation strategies were more about containment of the virus, going from 14 days to flatten the curve to a, to complete shutdowns implemented by governments and the gradual reopening with layering of mitigation strategies. They were reflective of the contextual unknowns about COVID-19. Two years later, it's now about herd immunity and we've made good progress in this area. This motion provides a responsive path forward in a framework based in science and data to narrowly target mitigation at schools experiencing levels of the disease spread that is unsafe while allowing optional masking at schools with exception, with acceptable levels of disease spread. All of K-12 Alatha Public Schools students and staff now have had access to the vaccine. Any who want the vaccine have now had both access and time to be fully vaccinated. Two years later, since the onset, we know much more about COVID. We know how COVID-19 is spread. We know the level of risk faced for the unvaccinated. We, we know the disease trends, tends to have a milder effect on children. We know how very contagious the virus is. We know that viruses mutate and will likely continue to see mutations. Omicron, the latest variant of SARS-CoV-2, appears to be more contagious but to cause less severity of illness generally. We know that the current level of spread within our community is high, is at 23.6%. A look at the JCDHE data for the age groups of our students, the percent positive for ages, ages zero through nine is 10% as of February 3rd today. Percent positive for age 10 through 19, 15%. Hospitalized, age zero through nine, 1%. Hospitalized age 10 through 19 is 2%. Percent in ICU, age zero through nine, 0%. Age 10 through 19, 1%. Number of deaths, zero in both categories. We are now in our third school year impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Throughout this pandemic, we have looked to our scientific experts for guidance, the CDC, World Health Organization, KDHE, JCDHE and others. Often, these experts offered conflicting recommendations and markedly different approaches to mitigation, yet as a board, we have been able to navigate our way through this challenging time, working to meet the need of our students and staff here in Alatha Public Schools. Mandating masks only for children K through sixth grade with no end game or matrix to stop the mandate for this entire school year places far too much value on the statistically insignificant and questionable benefit of masking our children. The lack of the data-driven matrix linked to the K-6 mask mandate implies that children are either the driving force behind the spread of COVID-19 or that they are more greatly impacted by the virus. Neither of these assumptions are grounded in science. The requirement to mask K through sixth children when they had no access to a vaccine could be considered reasonable. Now that all children age five and older have had access and plenty of time to receive the vaccine, it is rational to assume that the children whom are not vaccinated remain so by the choice of their parents or guardians. The mask mandate ignores or minimizes the socio-emotional and educational harms from masking children for this unprecedented, unprecedented duration of time. As educators, we know it is harmful when children are unable to see facial expressions of their peers and of the adults around them in order to learn social cues and to understand how to read emotions. Reading faces is critical for social, emotional learning. Our own lesson plans instruct kindergarten, kindergarten teachers to form an O with their lips into the shape of the letter for phonemic instruction. A mask prevents these kinds of important interactions between teachers and students. Many of America, America's peer nations have exempted children from wearing masks in classrooms and conspicuously, there's no evidence of more outbreaks in schools in those countries relative to schools in the United States where the majority of children wore masks through our entire academic year. These countries, along with the World Health Organization, whose child masking guidance differs substantially from the CDC's recommendations, have explicitly recognized that the decision to mask students carries with it potential academic and social harms for children and may lack a clear benefit. In a single flu season in the United States, more pediatric deaths occur from the flu than, than have occurred throughout this long pandemic, yet we have never mandated masks during flu seasons. Now that we have vaccines available to prevent severe disease, it is time to manage COVID-19 as if it is endemic and will be with us on a persistent basis. This safe building level mitigation framework will allow us to shift our focus away from the constant up and downs of COVID-19 and creates a sustainable plan and path forward that allows us to place our, our primary focus back on educating the children. This time-tested longstanding disease mitigation strategy at the building level allows Alatha School District to define the endpoint for mandating masking of our children and a specific matrix, matrix that will help us contain the spread to acceptable levels within each school, just as we do with every other communicable disease. So, I ask for your support in this motion and I thank you for the opportunity to have shared my thoughts on this issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions from staff or?
Leeta, what's significant about February 18th?
It gives us a buffer of time and it allows the Board of County Commissioner review to occur, which they've scheduled the day before on the mask mandate, whether it will be continued or not for K through sixth.
So, the, the thinking is that if it's not continued, then this motion will then take effect the day that they discontinue that, that order?
You're saying if they don't continue it, this will take effect?
Correct.
If they don't continue it, we'll have to talk about it. If they discontinue the mask mandate on the 17th, I would think it, then that effect would be the same.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so one of the things, I just had a couple of things actually to mention.
Please.
If it's okay with you guys, I may do that right now. They, they do meet on the 17th. That was their commitment to come back and talk about the, the masking mandate that's in place. You know, one of the things you may consider is they meet every Thursday, so it's possible they may make that decision earlier than the 17th just because they meet on a weekly basis. So, I just wanted to throw that out there as something that you might want to talk about or think about. The other thing too, is we've talked a lot about authority in terms of us not having a choice and following the masking mandate by the county commissioners. What I would say is if this would move forward tonight and the county commissioners decided to keep the mask mandate in place, you know, later than the 17th, that would be a time probably where I would be saying, hey, Board of Education, let's get, get together, have a special meeting to talk about the legal implications of this, because I'd want us to be very careful as we navigated those waters, should we be in a place that that happens. So, you know, just, just a couple of things from my perspective to, to think about as you talk about this tonight.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a comment if I could. Many months ago, I came and spoke to the board, the, over there, and I recognized the work that that school board and many of you who are on it had done. And I want to make sure that I reemphasize that this board has taken the financial steps to keep our schools with good airflow, with all the mitigation efforts. This board, and I said it, I've said it several times, I, I was proud of the efforts, the investments, the things that the board did throughout the early phases before we learned a lot to do what was best and right. They made the investments, the financial investments and the mental and emotional investments. I've also, right, so I recognize that. And those things are all in place today. And I want to thank those board members that are here for the work that they've done throughout this time. And I also have also said that I'm ready, our community's ready to take back control, responsibility and share that at this board and give that to our parents. Would I like this to have happened a long time ago? Yes. But I, I wholeheartedly support Leeta's motion. Would I like it to be tomorrow? Yes. But do I think it's prudent? Do I think it's proper to help families prepare and organize themselves, help our school teachers prepare and organize? I, with all my heart, would advocate that we work together, that we as a team up here present to the community that we want our kids unmasked. I have talked to you all individually, different times, before I was on the board and all that kind of stuff. I know your hearts. You love your kids, you love these kids, you love these teachers, and I truly understand that and respect that. And I want to make sure you hear my word that I know that to be true. And that is my hope, is that we can send a sign to the community that this board, whatever happened in the past, that this board can find a way to say, we can work together and we can start moving past this and the many other things that we have ahead of us. And so, with that, I, I ask your support for this motion. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else have any?
Thank you, Leeta, for your motion. I, there's a lot of data points in there that I think are really important, but one of the messages I'd like to send to the community is that we also care very much about science and what science tells us. And we've given this pandemic a lot of time to teach us a lot and if anything, we know that it, it morphs and it changes and, and I think that, that that's an important thing that, that maybe we can all take personally into our own lives and, and, and learn from that. But one of the questions I do have, and I, and I think it's actually something that, that we, I've done some research on my own, but I'm not a scientist and I had asked Dr. Yeager, maybe someone, staff could speak to, and that's what have we learned about the protection, that a high-quality, well-fitting mask can offer someone in an optional mask environment that prefers to be masked when other people aren't? And have, have we learned enough about the virus for the person who prefers to be masked? Are they protected? And so, if we have someone who could, from a scientific perspective, offer that to those people who are very concerned about being in an unmasked environment?
Yeah, if you'd like, we can have Sharon pop up to the microphone and talk about that.
That'd be great.
Sharon's our director of, of student health in the district, who is our hero of the last two years with COVID.
Thank you. And she's still standing. That's amazing.
And she is, she is still standing and.
That's great.
And believe it or not, you can tell she has a smile on her face too.
[laughing]
We appreciate her tremendously. So, thank you, Sharon.
Good evening. So, from a nursing perspective, masks have been a mitigating measure for infectious disease for, over a century and were used even historically back in the plague times. But we have increased the technology and so, I'll just speak to some of the latest data that I've been reading as late as today of what some of the mitigating measures are for masks. Now, one of the, the really important part about masks is the fit and what it's made of. So, making sure, and the current recommendations are on CDC. I have websites, web links that I can send out to you of the latest, some of the research that I'm basing this on and CDC. The two layers of densely woven fabric and they recommend that the more dense it is, silk is well-liked because it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't absorb the moisture as much, so it's more comfortable. Cotton, tightly woven cotton, any densely woven fabric. Also, that it fits snugly. And so, like the way I have this, I have put two little knots over on the side and then tucked the excess under. I can tell you, I can put my reading glasses, which I am relegated to using these days. I can put them on and actually it doesn't fog up my glasses, so I know I have a good seal. And. seal, and that helps both from a perspective of if I were to become sick, that I'm shielding, putting all that out into the atmosphere, but also even from a perspective, if I were wearing this and others were not, it does give me a good element of protection. Better still, if I really were concerned, and there are some among us that are immune compromised, and we have to be concerned about this, you can add a second layer and you can put your fabric mask over it, which increases the protection for it. That, they say, the knotted, they say, gives about 65% reduced risk. The two get you up to approximately, and depending on what study, you know, there's ranges in different studies, approximately 83% reduction if you go with the double mask. And I know some children who are double masking because they have immune conditions. We have some had, there are some masks that come with the double layer, and this, I notice, is kind of silky inside, but it also has a filter that you can slide in, you know, and so you can take this out when you wash it and then slide them back in. This particular model comes with two, and I've seen where you can purchase these little filters separately. And so that again, I've also heard that even paper towels, because they are a dense fabric, very tightly woven, you can use them in there, too. That adds additional protection. That takes this two-ply mask, this two layers up to three or four layers, depending on that, and then you have your K95s. I don't, the N95s require a fitting in order to really get to that N95 mitigation. You can wear, if you do get an N95 and you just wear it without the fitting it specifically to your face, you're still going to get a higher level of protection, and your K95s do not require fit testing. So this is another good option. So just so you can see, there are some good options, and those provide that high 83% to 90% protection. So masks have been shown down through the course of infectious diseases to be effective, and that's why when I was the head nurse of an infectious disease unit, I wore my mask going into those that were respiratory, were in respiratory isolation. There's different kinds. But when it was an aerosol or a respiratory transmission, the mask was our first line of defense.
Thank you, Sharon.
Excellent, excellent information.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Morris before she sits down? Or just questions in general, comments?
Brad, can we go back to what you were discussing about the actual date? We've been focused on council's advice to not break from the mandate by the EOCC, and the date of the 18th, we're kind of, I don't want to say playing a guessing game, but should they not lift that? We don't know what will happen, and we don't know when it could happen and if it will happen, and if we go forward with the 18th, we could find ourselves in a situation where we need to revisit this motion.
We could, and we could find ourselves in the spot where we're reaching out and saying, you know, by statute, we should give you two days' notice for you to agree to a special meeting. So we would be reaching out probably the afternoon of the 17th and saying, will you please indicate that you're willing to waive that two days' notice and get together and have a special meeting so we can consider that? So yeah, I mean, part of it is very dependent on what they would decide on the 17th. That's correct.
Any other questions? So I had a question that, just not specifically related to this motion, but I wanted to ask it. I got this question several times via email and then tonight in public comments about the masks being required because of federal money. Can you just clarify that publicly?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. So ARP is the American Recovery Plan. In the world of education, it's referred to as ESER funding. School districts receive that through dissemination from the State Department of Education, if you will. And there is a misunderstanding pretty widely that in order to receive those funds, we have to have a mask mandate in place. That is not correct. ESER I primarily came forward to help districts procure PPE that they may need and the initial pieces of COVID. ESER II and ESER III, there's a little bit of that money that you have to carve out for what they are calling lost learning and ways to support lost learning. In our district, we've really focused all of our efforts there in terms of, you know, keeping our staff, recruiting staff, keeping class sizes where they are, getting some interventions in place across the system and those kinds of things. But in terms of anything related to masking or even required PPE, if you will, at this point, there's nothing there that requires us to do that.
No, that's not specific to this motion, but I wanted to.
Am I correct to understand as well that this doesn't impact buses? Or does it? Because that is specifically a federal?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Brad, I'd like to say one last thing is I want to make sure that we're also clear that for those that are autoimmune compromised and those that do wish to wear masks, there should be no discrimination. If we get to mask optional, those people should be supported, they should be recognized, they should be provided the full dignity as just as we would want those who have mask exemptions today. I want to be very clear, there's no place that when we become mask optional and most of, look at it, we're all wearing different masks. If we're all mask chosen, we didn't choose to wear one, we have to respect everybody regardless where they are. My daughter is in Olathe North, she has a teacher that lives with the mother who is immunocompromised and of an age, and my daughter sits in that front row, and even when they were mask optional, she puts that mask on out of respect and love for the teacher. That's the kind of kids we want to talk to. Those are the kids in our district, and all of us have that responsibility to know who's educating them, to care for them, and in that class, she wore it. And when it was just mask optional, she took it off the other classes. That's really important, that if the teachers have, I know there's a teacher in Olathe Northwest that has cardiac issues. Those kids love and respect that teacher, and they have a relationship that in that class, mask or unmasked, they do it for each other. That's really important in this community, and if we are going to come together, we have to emphasize doing the right thing for the right reasons. I want to make sure I put that on record. Those people have a right to be heard, all of us, and that's who we're representing, all of them, the teachers, the staff, the kids, the community. So I just want to make sure I really got that on record.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. Can I offer an amended motion just with the nuanced dates in case the Board of County Commissioners next Thursday does the heavy lifting for us?
So I think if that were to happen, wouldn't we fall?
We'd have to vote down one. We'd have to vote it down.
What's that?
You have to vote down the first motion.
Well, no, I'm just, your question is about the date and being concerned about the date. My understanding is if it, let's say they decided on the 10th, I guess it would be to get rid of it, wouldn't we fall back to what we voted on in October?
November, which is that as soon as it went away, we would be back to optional masking with our gating criteria in place. And that would be our adjusted gating criteria tonight.
Let's just leave it then. Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, does anyone want Barb to read the motion again, or are we good to just vote?
Would she read it again, please, for the record?
So to move to implement building-level mitigation practices district-wide and to apply the Olathe Public School optional mandatory mask gating criteria to all schools across the district effective February 18th, 2022, with the expectation that our matrix will be reviewed on a regular basis and adjusted as our data and county health department guidance begins to provide a clearer path forward.
All right.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, and we are on to future action items, 9.01 to 9.06, and we'll remove the double up there. And then we have our Head Start written information as well, and on to board comments.
Can I say something about the Head Start?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So I was, you voted me on to that board. I had the first meeting and actually attended the meeting before I had actually been coached by the Kim, I call him the Kim Squared. I have to tell you, what an impressive group of people in that policy council, the moms and the dads and the staff. It's a parent who actually runs the meeting, and she was awesome. She runs those rules and schedules and votes and motions, and I thought I was really, really impressed with the parents that were part of that and the staff, and I would just want to say thank you all of the board for allowing me to have that role and to learn from them, and I'm excited for the coming year in that role. So I just want to, on record, just say thank you.
I knew you would love it.
Any other board comments before I turn it over to Dr. Yeager? All right, the floor is yours.
All right, I have a few tonight. You know, the first thing I would like to do tonight is recognize the awesome students who are at our meeting tonight. You know, we had a couple of students from Regency Place, a couple of students who spoke during public comments, and what an intimidating place to come and talk, and they all just did such an amazing job. So so proud of the students that were here tonight just because they represent our district so well. I'm excited that in March, we'll do a formal recognition of this, but on January 16th, we had our Martin Luther King contest that we have annually. It really is such an important event as we think about the legacy of Dr. King. This year, we had over 1,000 entries from within our district, middle and high school students, and we'll definitely celebrate that at our meeting next month in terms of bringing the best in show here, and we're excited to show a video production that that student made and those kinds of things. So that will be part of our meeting next month, and you know, having that on MLK Day and then doing it at our March meeting are really nice bookends as we think about celebrating Black History Month in our district. So I'm really, really pleased to be able to do that and just proud of our students for being so involved in that, and also our Department of Diversity and Engagement for working to make that happen and to orchestrate that and those pieces as well. Last meeting, we talked a little bit about the TEAL substitute licenses. TEAL, T-E-A-L, is an acronym for something. I wish I could tell you what it is, but I don't remember. But that was action by the State Board of Education to allow some temporary substitute licenses for those in the state of Kansas to help us with our substitute situation. As I mentioned last month, we are really appreciative of the State Board having that conversation, and I'm going to be honest that it's a little bit of a challenge for us to know exactly where to land that because, you know, the board talked about the opportunity for anyone who is 18 or older on the State Board, anyone who is 18 or older and has a high school diploma, having the ability to substitute. And, you know, while we appreciate that a great deal, one of the things that we always have to remember in Olathe is we want the very best in front of our students each and every day. Our staff in our district has worked tirelessly to learn the art and science of teaching. Many of them have earned advanced degrees, and it's pretty hard to boil down all their work to a high school diploma. And so that was, you know, really a piece that our team talked backwards and forward through as we looked at that. And then, you know, to be frank, as we talked about it also, we talked about the fact that we don't really think it's appropriate probably to have an 18-year-old student in front of a class full of students in our district. There are some districts that that probably will help them greatly. Luckily, we can still be a little choosy here in Olathe, so where we've landed with that, and HR's began talking about this publicly this week, is the first piece again is that a person must have a high school diploma, that they must be at least 21 years of age in our district, that they must be recommended by a school administrator, and they need to complete a phone interview with our manager of substitute services. In addition to that, they get the background checks, the KBI background checks and all those pieces as well. We have a few people who are eager to get going with this. Primarily, it's community members who have really wanted to help our schools and haven't been able to because they didn't have 60 college credit hours and those kinds of things. So we've seen a few of those people trickle in. Again, this is just through this school year, so this isn't something that will go on past that. So I had the opportunity to meet with some staff from the governor's office this week, and we talked specifically about this, and one of the things we talked about was the ability to get these applications expedited fairly quickly for background checks and those kinds of things. Sometimes that can take a little while, and they were very interested in hearing us talk about that, so I was very appreciative of that as well. So just wanted to give you an update in terms of where we are with that. I've probably been asked about 326 times this week how we are on snow days and count for the end of the year and if we are extending the school year and those kinds of things. The answer is at this point, we don't need to. Always in our calendar in Olathe, we have excess of what is required by the state in terms of the hours in school. Right now, a minimum, we have about two days left that we could use for snow days without being required to lengthen the school day, lengthen the school year, or anything like that. The folks that are closest, if you will, are our high school students, grades nine through 11. We're fine pretty much everywhere else. If we would get into a rough spot with terms of numbers of hours for those students, typically we lengthen the school day by five minutes for students and that kind of thing. And so far, barring any crazy weather, I think we will be okay, but should we need to make adjustments, they should be fairly minor in terms of where we are with that. While I'm talking about snow days, it's a good time to also thank our service center staff, our facility staff. They have worked like crazy the last two days, through the night, plowing our parking lots, touching them up again this morning, all of our custodial staff being on all of our walkways and snow blowing and all those things. When the bitter cold kept most of us inside, they were outside working really hard to make sure that we were safe as our staff comes back to work tomorrow morning and those kinds of things. So I just want to say how much I appreciate Travis Palangi and his team and all the work that they've done as well. It's also hard to say that without also thanking our Public Works Department. You know, they've been out trying to do everything they can to make sure that we can traverse our bus routes and things like that as well. So just want to offer appreciation to them. Next week, as you know, is parent-teacher conferences. Our schools are working hard for that. Our staff is going to spend some time tomorrow, not only in building professional development, as I said, working on the craft and the arts and art and science of teaching, but they'll be also preparing for parent-teacher conferences in preparation for the opportunity to visit with our parents next week and guardians as we try to support our students in the system. So we're excited that that's coming next week as well. And then last but not least, I'd like to thank Barb Beam, who is sitting next to me. This is our, I think, third board meeting together where she's sitting up here with all of us, and there's a lot to learn in terms of juggling all of this and a superintendent that's still figuring out what to do and all those kinds of things. So I just want to publicly thank her for navigating all the work that happens in terms of that seat and that chair as well. So those are my comments for tonight.
All right. And I believe we need two executive sessions.
We do. Let's start with 20 minutes for the first one, please.
Can I get a motion for that?
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney for the matter involving agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and the board return to regular meeting at 8:50 PM in this room. Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, think about Ms. Wissler.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes. Thank you very much.